At seven oh one, this town council meeting on number twenty second, twenty twenty two. If everyone could please rise for the allegiance of all that moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands on a nation under our eyes, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're conceded, thank you. Proportions and presentations we don't need tonight, but we will at our next meeting. There were three citations requested by Ern Maynard for Brock Lincoln, Mary Ann Tab, and we break four bush. And those will be presented at their coffee house at the UCC, right?
Yes.
Thirteen, so. That brings us to item five, which is public petitions, communications and public participation on any subject in jurisdiction of town council. With a two minute limit, you're on zoom, you can hit the raise hand function or star nine. And if you're in the audience, you can approach the table and state your name and address. Going once. Going twice. No public comments, so that brings us to six point one, public hearing, consideration of resolution of twenty twenty two Steve Grant Award appropriation. For the tennis court renovation and replacement project in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars consideration resolution. Get dressed. And I'll let, right, when I take it away.
On September nineteenth of this year, we were notified by old friend Martin Heft, the under secretary. That received a Steve Grant from the state of five hundred thousand to redo our, basically our tennis courts at Randall's. The amount now, this amount exceeds the balance for that we're going to require a public hearing as part of the approval process from, according to town charter nine dash fourteen.
Any further discussion before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, if you're in a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
So by council Luba, second, second, a council Murray. And because we have one person at home, we'll do a roll call vote. So council Murray.
Hi.
Council Khan, vice chair Egan. Council Luba.
Hi.
Councilman Ujek.
Hi.
I'm an I says unanimous, so the public hearing is now open. There's anyone that would like to speak on item six point one, you're welcome to do so. Going once, going twice, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
By council Luba.
Second.
Second, by council Murray. All's in favor, council Murray.
Hi.
Council Khan.
Hi.
Vice chair Egan.
Hi.
Council Luba.
Hi.
Councilman Ujek.
Hi.
I, is there any further discussion? Just one quick comment, I think I saw Bruce was on, actually last night, the water commission, one of the members who's an avid tennis player. Just wanted to write input that as the project moves forward, he hopes that there's some mechanic in the lighting system for nighttime use. I guess in the past, there was a dial or a button that you could use to extend the nighttime use for tennis courts. And it was taken away at some point by the town, so they just shared the information when I brought the hearing up to them, so I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's, that, I believe there was a, Bruce might go explain more, and he's on as to why that was done. I did receive a lot of letters via email and support of this project. Moreover, we are looking into replacing in its, like, I believe it's in the CIP. Replacing all those lights with LED lights as they're the old style. But Bruce, do you have any reason why the switch was yanked?
He was on. Yep, okay. Sorry. Uh, the main reason was when we got that control link hooked up, which allows me to. Turn off set schedules for the lighting system over there through the computer and door, my phone. When that unit was added on, I believe something happened to that switch. With the wiring that that took place when they they put that unit in, so it's it's something that just needs to be figured out. Through an electrician to see how we could have that going and functioning.
Great, thank you for the clarification. Does any further discussion?
I just wanted to make sure that I, we took a moment to acknowledge our previous grant manager, Leslie, for finding this grant. I know this is a grant that's leveraging already approved funding, so. It's a great way for us to have a grant come, come into town and, you know, we're talking about a half a million dollars worth of improvements to towns recreation spaces. So thank you very much to the town staff for finding this and making this happen.
Concur, that was all her, she did a great job, I'm very happy with that, thanks.
Okay, thank you, council Murray, any other comments? Right, seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the resolution as outlined in six point one.
So moved.
So by council Murray, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by council Luba. And all those in favor, council Murray.
Bye.
Council Khan. Vice chair Egan.
Hi.
Council Luba.
Hi.
Councilman Ujek.
Hi.
I'm an I, so that is unanimous, go forth and spend that money, right?
All right.
That brings us to six point two, which is a public hearing for the consideration of a resolution to create an affordable housing trust fund ordinance. And we have with us tonight, Dave Corcoran for planning and development, and I believe Mr. Powell was hoping to be here before seven thirty, but they might run late.
So this has been discussed in, were you ready to go, I'm sorry?
Go, first.
This is obviously in support of the two thousand and nineteen plan of conservation and development, it's been discussed extensively, both here and at PZC. Basically, it's requiring any, at least five percent of any new multifamily development, over ten units to have affordable housing. Five percent of the affordable housing, it's in the very simplest of terms here. This allows for the developers to have a buyout option, town council would have to create the administrative affordable housing trust fund in order to do that. The money would, that would be put in, say, if a developer didn't want to do five percent affordable housing, they could have a buyout option. That money would go into the fund, the fund has a very, I'd say, well-defined list of things that it can be used on. But that would have to be done with approval from council after recommendation from, I believe, the, was it the commission, what is it called, David?
Affordable Housing Committee.
Affordable House, thank you, Affordable Housing Committee. So that's, that's the heart of it, Dave's here to answer any question that anyone has at this point, but that's all I have, sir.
Right, thank you, Brian. That being said, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
So by council Murray, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by council Luba, do the roll call vote, council Murray.
Hi.
Council Khan. Vice chair Egan. Council Luba.
Hi.
Councilman Ujek.
Hi.
An I says unanimous, the public hearing is now open for anyone that is in the audience that would like to participate. Going once. Going twice. I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right, roll call vote, council Murray.
Hi.
Council Khan.
Hi.
Vice chair Egan.
Hi.
Council Luba.
Hi.
Councilman Ujek.
Hi.
And I says unanimous, the public hearing is now closed, is there any additional discussion?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, that, I'm glad to see this go forward, I'm glad to see that the revisions that the PZC came forward with. That there was a lot of discussion, we've had numerous discussions on this issue over the past, probably at least a year or so. Um, I'll state first that I had significant reservations. In fact, I was against this from the very beginning, without the modifications that PZC came up with some appropriate revisions. Which I felt were appropriate and that would encourage the development rather than hinder development of the town of talent. And I think overall that this is something that that I would support and I would ask the commission, I mean, as counsel support as well, thank you.
Thank you, council Luba, any other comments for council members? I'll just echo that, yes, I think March was a lot of, the head-to-head heated discussions and over time, I think. Cooler had prevailed and a lot of compromise occurred, so it was really great to see us move forward with this trust and with the committee that will oversee it. So there's no other discussion, I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution outlined in six point two.
So moved.
Second.
I will say it.
By council Murray, do a roll call vote, council Murray.
Hi.
Council Khan.
Hi.
Vice chair Egan.
Hi.
Council Luba.
Hi.
Councilman Ujek.
Hi.
I am an I says unanimous, thank you, everyone, that brings us to six point three, which is. Resolute, or yeah, consideration of a resolution to amend any one seventy three batch nine of all time code related to planning and zoning application fees.
So, Mr. Chair, this is an effort to really, you know, in 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 simple terms, improve our reputation to developers and economic development also. But low-cost housing as well, affordable housing, it's the goal of simplifying the development process and also bringing our fees. To comparable rates to that of our neighbors, to encourage development in our town. And David worked closely again with the PZC, and it was discussed extensively. Attached to the the packet today is the, the changes in it, David, Mr. Corbin's here today to answer any questions, should anyone have any, that's it.
Right, thank you. Any discussion for group in the public hearing? All right, entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
So by council Murray, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by council Luba, do a roll call vote, council Murray.
Hi.
Council Khan.
Hi.
Vice chair Egan.
Hi.
Council Luba.
Hi.
Councilman Ujek.
Hi.
I'm an I, so that is unanimous, the hearing is now open for anyone in the public that would like to participate. Going once, going twice, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing for six point three.
So moved.
So by council Luba, is there a second, second, and by council Murray. Council Murray.
Hi.
Council Khan.
Hi.
Vice chair Egan.
Hi.
Council Luba.
Hi.
Councilman Ujek.
Hi.
I'm an I, so that is unanimous. And is there any additional conversation or comments for council members?
Yeah.
Council Murray.
I, I just want to thank the planning and zoning commission and the planning office, I think. Making our town more business-friendly as we look at development is important, and so thank you very much for your efforts on this.
I concur.
Thank you on behalf of the team.
Thank you. All right, same open discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution outlined in six point three.
So moved.
So by council Murray, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by council Luba, do a roll call vote, council Murray.
Hi.
Council Khan.
Hi.
Vice chair Egan.
Hi.
Council Luba.
Hi.
Councilman Ujek.
Hi.
An I says unanimous, that brings us to six point four, resolution, your resolution appropriating. One point five million for the installation of eight bags improvements at the political school and palliative school and authorizing the issuance of up to nine hundred thousand dollars. In bonds and notes to finance the appropriation, and I believe we also have with us tonight Pete Staba from the Board of Ed. Now, would you take it away?
Mr. Chair, this will, this will rely heavily on Mr. Staba and and his expertise, there was a grant offered by the state in relation to air quality in the schools. This project was recently included as a part of the Board of Education's capital improvements plan for the upcoming CIP process, much of those details are attached, I'll share the screen if need be. But Mr. Staba is here to answer any questions.
Any questions for council before we open the public hearing? Council Luba.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, so this is the same issue that we've covered that on a prior meeting. Regarding the, it was, we were discussing regarding replacing the entire unit or just repairing it, is that, is this still, this is something completely different?
No, that was completely different, that was the boiler system, this was the HVAC system that there was a grant opportunity, you said the public hearing on the twenty fifth.
Okay. Okay, I just, that's why, I just want to make sure so that there is no confusion about it.
All right, no worries.
Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, council Luba. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All's in favor, council Murray.
Bye.
Council Khan. Vice chair Egan.
Hi.
Council Luba.
Hi.
Councilman Ujek.
Hi.
And I, so the hearing is now open for anyone in the public that would like to speak on public hearing of six point four. All right, going once, going twice, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
For a second.
Second.
Thank you, by council Luba, all's in favor, council Murray.
Hi.
Council Khan. Vice chair Egan.
Hi.
Council Luba.
Hi.
Councilman Ujek.
Hi.
I am an I. So that is closed, are there any additional questions or comments from council members? Council Murray.
So I, the town manager has up on the screen some questions and the corresponding answers from the. Board of Ed staff regarding this project that were submitted. I, I think a lot of these questions came from me, so I wanted to thank Board of Ed staff for answering all these questions, I know they got out to council. My understanding is, Mr. Chair, these are going to make it into the minutes as part of the record. So I did want to thank the Board of Ed staff for finding all of these answers. My. Biggest concern about this project. Is that one point five million dollars is not going to cover it, I understand that. The. The pricing that was received kind of informally brings the estimated cost to one point two million dollars, a little bit more. But that leaves two hundred forty-five thousand dollars to cover engineering and design costs, permits, environmental abatement, electrical upgrades that are. Offset potential structural modifications and the contingency. It can, a twenty percent contingency for one point two five five would be two hundred fifty-one thousand, so. We're being asked to consider a project where the. Intingency dollars. Are going to cover a lot more than just contingency is sort of where I'm getting to, so that's my biggest concern about what's before us today.
Lisa, do you have any, any idea about the framing of what she just asked us?
Sorry, I was trying to get unmuted. No, I, I do agree, Peter and I went over this and he felt that this would be sufficient funds. And I think Peter's the expert on it that would have to provide more input because I'm not familiar with the details of the entire project.
Yeah, I mean, to be honest, we are leaving roughly. Doing the math, close to twenty percent of extra costs based upon numbers that were received that did, that did include roofing at the time. Included all the equipment, included roofing cut-in, including the control systems that are going to be needed to. Integrate into the current system. I would anticipate the engineer to be. Two to four percent of this project at the most, it's pretty straightforward. Permits are, are, we're, we're only going to have to pay through the town what the portion that the town charges for. Not the state portion, well, actually it is for the state portion, the town portion is waived. Environmental abatement, we are going to try to not conduct any of that. But, and I think there's some ways in which we can kind of avoid most of it. Electrical. Upgrades would only be needed if we have space within panel issues. But I don't foresee that being a major problem either, because we have current systems that are there now that are heating only units that are not very efficient. So load and breaker sizing is actually rather large on those anyway. The structural modifications should not be a major concern. The middle school was built to be able to add a second story on the entire section of the first floor section. As well as TIS. You're looking at just a couple of units there that are rooftop units that we can split, split apart onto two separate sides of the roof. So I, I think the two forty-five should be ample funds to, you know, at least do what we're trying to do here. And I, I, I think the number is sufficient there as well. Contingency is only, you are only allowed by five percent of that project from the state of Connecticut as well. Through the Office of School Construction, so we cannot. Increase that number any more than what the state is going to cover. And anything over that is going to be borne by the, by the town of, the town of talent.
Thank you very much, Pete, I, I appreciate you walking us through that.
Yeah, and Katie, I just want to say too, I mean, there's, there's also going to be many other school systems. You know, that are going to probably try to go after these, these, these dollars, so. Unlike doing a roof, which you get into the pipeline and they may postpone you a couple of years on that. The, the state of Connecticut is going, is going to consider these apps as a competitive grant, okay, so. They may consider our situation to be, you know, less, you know, let, less urgent than other schools that may not have AEC at all. There are other schools out there that, that don't. I know Ellington Middle School has very little AEC there. But the problem is the due dates for the apps were so restrictive that many towns did not have time to go out for referendum. For our case, our project just happened to be small enough that we could use other funds to fund our fortune, so. Just going to have to wait and see on that part, so, but as part of this process, we do have to consider these projects, it's two separate, two separate projects. We have to fill out a separate app for each site, we have to have a separate building committee for each site. Separate ed specs which were just approved by the Board of Ed for each site. The resolutions have to be site-specific as well. So we can, you know, again, when it comes time to go out to bid, look for, you know. The architect or the engineer, there could be some, some crossover with, with that based upon bidding. But both projects actually have to be bid separately as well, so. They are not making, making easy for us in that aspect, but, and there's a chance they could say yes to one school and no to the second one. We don't have control over that, just has to do with the, you know, amount of apps that they receive by December first.
Well, thank you, and, and thank you to the Board of Ed staff for getting this together so quickly. I know sometimes from our perspective, it's hard to see these things come in really quick, but to know that this is a competitive grant for something that the school system might want to do anyway. And to find forty-nine point something percent reimbursement is, seems like a good deal, so thank you very much, Peter.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, council Murray, any other questions, council members, council Luba?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, so, um, I, I don't know if this is something that Lisa may be the one to address or Brian as well regarding this, so this is all. This was previously included as part of the board's capital, capital plan, is that correct?
Define, define previously.
Well, this is something that was something that was going to be down the road within like the next year, two, three years, that was going to have to be addressed by, by the Board of Education.
I think that's accurate, that it would have to be addressed eventually, as far as looking at previous capital improvement plans prior to my arrival here, just in light reading. I didn't see it in there, but Lisa assured me it was in the forthcoming capital improvements plan. And it's.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
And it's in the, it's now in the capital plan for this one, that's going to, for this next budget cycle.
So, but it's not something that we had like a five-year plan, this was further on down the road that we were looking at.
Uh, yeah, but Lisa, was it in one and it got bumped out, do you know anything about that?
I'm trying to remember, I know it's definitely in the one that the Board of Ed just passed, Peter, was this like year six?
So Lisa, this was a new addition for this fiscal year, for this cycle, okay, so. Remember, I finished my plan August fifteenth, and it was before the bill was actually passed, but I knew the bill was in the, was in the midst of being passed. So I was trying to plan ahead for this, thinking that this would be a real thing, okay, so. When I put this together, I had this a few, a few years out, I think I had it maybe three years out, three or four. From when I did it in August, so we were probably like fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, or something like that. And then the bill got approved in September, and then the grants, we had training on the grant with the Office of School Construction sometime. First week of October, I believe it was, and they talked about the specifics and how you would. Prep for this and the due dates and all the things that were going to be needed. So we had to modify that timeline a little bit because. The Office of School Construction Grants are forcing you to finish this project within two years of your commitment. And if I'm guessing, I think commitments are probably going to be given. By March of next year, March or April is what I'm assuming. So we would need our timeline to match up with the grant time, timeline, if we do get approved.
And, and this is part of a competitive grant program, is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
So there's no guarantee that we're going to get that state funding?
That is, that is correct, yeah.
Think if, you know, the earlier you applied, the better off we would be for this, the town itself, as other schools will gobble it up pretty quickly, I think.
And so, so what if, you know, so say we put in for this, for this grant, and then it's, it was out of proof of the grant. Are we still then stuck with going forward with this, with this program, with, with this plan?
I'm sorry, councilman, would you say, I missed that, choking half the demo here.
Maybe on your own. I know, so if, if we, so if we put in, so the plan is that we're putting in for this grant. And that we're including that as part of the funding for, for the overall project.
Yep.
Is this a commitment where, say, we don't get that funding, are we still planning going forward with this program, with this plan?
That's a good question, I'm going to, I'm going to bounce that one to our friend Peter.
In my personal opinion, I think we would come back to both the Board of Ed and the Town Council and say. We were not approved for this grant, this could remain in the CIP. But in essence, we are funding it at that point at a hundred percent. And that still gives you a few years to decide if it's worthy enough to remain on the CIP plan. The main reason why it's sitting in front of you tonight is because I have to complete the application by December first. The state's not doing us any favors in that, and, which is actually giving us a better chance of getting approved for this because. I guarantee you, my colleagues at other towns are struggling to try to put this together. I mean, it's going to be tight just to get the, the certified meeting minutes of tonight's meeting in time to be able to turn this stuff in, okay, so. That's the only reason why it's sitting in front of you tonight. But if we do not get approved, I think we should come back to the table. And we can hash it over on whether or not you want it to stay in the, in the CIP.
So, well, and that just spun off a few different questions, one of the things is that you're saying that you need to get certified minutes in order to submit. Our next meeting is going to be till after the deadline, so there's no way that we could really certify these minutes. You know, because that means we'd have to go, get it out to the, to the town council, we'd have to review it, we'd have to vote on it. So really, we're, we're already, we're already missed the deadline. I mean, that unless, unless there's going to be a special meeting just to prove the minutes, like next Monday or Tuesday. There's no way we're going to be able to get it done.
They, they will accept stamp minutes, Lou, and then I should be able to turn in when you. When you have your next meeting, so just stamp minutes as well as the. Resolutions, if you guys do uh approve those fur- further down, yes.
And and you've got that in writing, and you've got that verified so that we're not acting upon it. Anticipating something and then all of a sudden not being accurate, because we've had something like that happen on a few occasions before, so.
No, that's uh, that's also fine, um. The during the training, there were some uh towns that were not be not going to be able to have a referendum. Uh, prior to the December first deadline. So the the promise of local authorized funding uh could actually be extended into January. Um, if that allowed them to be able to fund the project to meet the re- the requirements for the Office of School Construction. But our point here is to to try to get this um wrapped up as much as we can, obviously.
And then this next question is for either Brian or Lisa, where we, at the last meeting, to address the boiler issue. We approved funding, um, and I can't, I mean, it's. We've had so many of these things where they're coming up last minute again, uh, where we've had to address where uh that. We had to appropriate funding, and I can't recall if any of that had to go to bonding. And if it did, how much bonding was it again, and how were you, how does that compare with our overall bonding rate? And and what we've gotten so far, since, you know, this is now the second time in. Two or three meetings where we're going for significant funding from the town on a bonding issue.
Lisa.
May I address that? Okay, um, the boiler one from the last meeting, the eighty-seven thousand dollars, that definitely was not part of our bonding. Debt management program. The um. This bonding will have to be factored in to our debt plan if it is approved this evening. It was not anticipated. Um, originally, so it wasn't in our original debt plan. But as I'm putting the capital plan together, once this is approved this evening, then I I factor it in with uh. With only the difference between the grant and that is what, you know, I would be um issuing debt for.
So, I mean, so basically, the bottom line for me is, how does compare, how will this affect us as far as for our borrowing? Our financing, our our bonding issues, and our overall, you know, uh liquidity for the uh for the town?
Was, as far as liquidity, you know, the bonding would provide the cash flow for that. Again, without looking at how the debt plan is put together, and I've got it out there working on it now. It may raise the cost of debt depending on what else is pushed out. Um, so we're we're in the process of working on that right now, but we don't have the final numbers together yet. Because we're still finalizing the capital plan to determine where everything fits in. Now, um. So as far as the liquidity, the debt, the debt would be issued where necessary, the drawdowns for the. The grant would happen very quickly if they they do get it. Now, if they don't get the grant, then that's gonna have a more. Higher impact on. The the debt management plan, because obviously, well, we, if you move forward with the project, you would have to issue. You know, more debt, and that's gonna cost the town more money. So. I hope I just answered your question, or did I miss?
So. So we're we're counting on, uh, hopefully, this the state paying based upon this financial summary that we have here in front of us. Seven hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, or seven forty-four, six hundred. Where that's what we're hoping to get. If we don't get that, on top of the nine hundred thousand dollars that we're looking to bond tonight. Of which, you know, that says here that we're anticipating uh that it's only gonna be, that we only need to issue. Seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred dollars. But based upon the question put forward by Ms. Murray, as well as addressed by Mr. Sada, that that's. I mean, I don't think I've seen a plan where we've ever actually come on that bond amount, and that we're looking at most likely borrowing up that full nine hundred thousand. So we're looking at a possibility within the next. Two years of bonding out for that one point five, the possibly one point six million dollars. If we don't get that state funding, is that correct?
It would not be one point six million, because the only amount we've asked for an appropriation for is up to one point five million. And at this, if that grant is not approved. Then I would be with Peter with coming back to the Board of Education and the Town Council regarding this project moving forward and and the timing of it. Because if it doesn't have to be done now, I would prefer to see it later on as more debt falls off the books. Now, I could be incorrect, but I, from what I understand. Peter, are we mandated to do this as part of the legislation?
Uh, there are gonna be temperatures, set point maximums, um. Within uh teaching space areas, which does include gyms, uh, it doesn't actually include caps. Because lunch waves are considered part of that. And humidity controls uh should be in some ways in place. The easiest way to do that is to provide A C. We have had some times when we've reached, you know, eighty-five to eighty-nine. Degrees in places like the middle school gym, uh, most of those, you know, per. Either in June uh or, you know, late August through September twentieth timeframe. But um, one of the bigger issues that we have is just that. In places like the middle school, for instances, we just have a lot of square footage uh that does not have A C still. Um, right in the middle of our of our building, so it's 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 putting a lot of strain on the on the geo. You know, the geo units that are classroom units that are down in the art rooms there on the far side of the school. Main office units and so on. So what Dr. Willett would be forced to uh to do is is he would have to have a management plan uh for all kids that might have five oh fours or. I E Ps on on where they would go and have gym, uh, where they might eat. There would be restrictions of use in those areas if the if those uh set points uh reach certain certain levels. Is it enforceable? It's. To some ways, yes, um, you know, I I don't think the state's gonna run around with uh, you know. Infrared thermometers, but if if you are a talent parent and you know that. Your kid comes home complaining and said, you know, it's like a hundred degrees in the gym. That's gonna create issues for us, um, so Dr. Willett's gonna have to have that that management plan there. Uh, ba- based upon what we're seeing here. So I I think this is gonna gain more uh traction as time goes on as well. Uh, there could be other funding chances uh too, um, beyond the hundred and fifty million from the state of Connecticut, but this is currently. The only one that's out there now. But um, indoor air quality, especially since uh COVID uh seems to be something that's kind of a hot button right now.
One, one of the other options to uh Council Luba is. If we end up not getting the grant, then we might have an opportunity to try to use some of the ARPA funds. Rather than issuing debt. Um, unfortunately, because there's a state grant involved, we can't offset the other share of it with our funding. So that, that's the challenge where we had to issue debt because there's no way. That we would be able to incorporate that into a budget as far as, you know, pay as you go or anything of that magnitude. So that that's another option, and again, that would have to be vetted through the subcommittee as well as. The Town Council, but if it makes it that far, but tho- those are some of the things to consider if um if things don't come through. To talk about anyway.
All right, and then one, I mean, one other question that I. I got a bunch of questions, but I'm gonna try and limit it to just a few more, because I wanna have to give everyone an opportunity to address this. That, and looking through the project description, there's also a statement inside there about uh. Taking this one step further, the Talon Board of Education is contemplating doing a solar project in our district. That will help offset the greater need of the electricity, provide A C in these proposed areas. How is that gonna be funded, and when is that project, and was the what? Where are we going to see this? Because I'm always, now that I see some of these things, I'm always concerned about. Okay, when's the next shoe gonna drop on this next project? Because this is tied into this other project now, and we're tying this, and so it starts to snowball in fact. Where, you know. Where's it stop and what, you know, so what is that, you know, what can we expect with that, Peter, if you can talk to that issue? Since it seems like this may be something that's tied in.
Mr. Chair, that that is part of my upcoming Board of Education liaison report. Because it is not directly tied into this project.
I can speak on it too.
Okay, I mean, if you guys welcome to provide information to, because it's mentioned in the.
Yeah, I mean.
In the report for the uh capital plan, it might be good just to bring it up sooner than later.
I'll let, I'll let Pete elaborate, but um, there's the Connecticut Council Municipalities uh officer program for towns municipalities to get involved in. Solar programs at no cost to the town, um, typically, unless we wanted to purchase the uh solar panels and then maintain it, much like the the development we have down on South River Road. It'd be a similar type of lease op- lease option, however, the uh service provided by C C M would actually vet out the leases, uh, the contractors. Uh, handle much of the uh building, uh, the maintenance uh in the the building project itself. Um, and really, look at what. Option is gonna be best uh for the town. I am looking at it for. A whole list of town properties I provided C C M today, and I believe Peter has some for the school, so yes, it it. I thought at first there'd be some cost, but as the way it was described today, and Bev, you were on, is that accurate, that there there would not be a lot of cost layout for this?
Well, that sort of sounds like those guys that are calling me up saying, hey, we can install solar on your house for no cost.
It sort of does sound like that, yes, I agree, and and so that was my main concern, and meaning, but C C M is a a a very good organization uh and very credible. And they vetted this out, uh, other municipalities have had already had success. Uh, with C C M, with this middle person who then vents out all the the solar contractors to uh assure the protection and best deal for the towns. Peter, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that this this kind of was the uh, the grand, the grand plan, um, since I've actually been on board, I've. I've been given the uh chore of wrapping up the Honeywell project, which was not fully finished when I when I came on board. I went ahead and I I identified a lot of other systems that were not taken care of with the Honeywell project. Many of which had to do with building envelope with roofs and windows and doors and talking and. Um, repointing and and uh went on to a sizable L E D lighting project that uh. We were able to get uh EverSource to fund roughly sixty-seven percent of that. Uh, where we went from uh twenty-eight watt lighting down to nine watt lighting. Uh, which was a much bigger difference from where Honeywell took us from thirty-two watts to twenty-eight watts at the time. Uh, that's created uh some significant savings on electric consumption. Um, to the tunes of um, a couple hundred thousand kil- kilowatt hours a year. I'm looking at the overall. Energy management plan for the Board Board of Ed. We're kind of running out of options as far as looking at efficiencies. You know, there's not a lot of other things we can really do, uh, you've got a lot of drives, we've done the lighting. Water consumption devices and limiting devices have all been have been installed everywhere. We don't have access to natural gas, um, so we are stuck with oil right now. So. Part of the issue is um, the town and the Board of Ed are tied into a supply contract through through. Direct energy through December of twenty twenty-four. And our supply rate is uh point oh six six nine right now. And uh, some of you may have just seen the news this past week, where EverSource is flirting with twenty to thirty cents on the dollar. From the Board of Ed portion alone, that's a three hundred to four hundred thousand dollar budget increase that I will have to hit you guys two years from now. Unless I do something, or unless we do something, okay, so. That's why we, I started to look into solar this past summer. Brian was on a call today with Bev, uh, Megan, Scott, uh, Lappin. And we discussed, you know, things on how we would pursue this further. Uh, but I've exhausted what I can with the efficiencies, uh, so one of my options here is to to try to. Is to try to generate power through power purchase uh agreements, which. From what I've been told, uh, should lead to no out-of-pocket expense for for the Board of Ed, or as uh well well as the town. If if you choose to own your own stuff, you would have your own expenses, you would have to maintain them. Um, but not on these other types of arrangements.
And then last question I have is. That, again, if we if we decide to approve this bond. And that we don't get the grant, where that we're not tied into it, and it's something that we can decide or reconsider. At a later point in time if we want to continue on and fund it fully on our own, is that correct?
I believe so. Lisa, is that accurate?
Yes, that is correct. You could either rescind the bond resolution, you could. Decide to use other funding sources. Once you, you know, once we have some better information regarding the grant.
Yeah, so Lou, I mean, part of part of the only reason why we're looking at this tonight is a a promise of local authorized funding. Is a requirement for the Os- for the Office of of School Construction. And it's because they don't want to entertain apps from districts that. Aren't serious, okay, it just comes down to uh to that, so if they're not willing to pay their portion, they're not gonna even. Re- review the application, okay?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Councilmember, but I think you just actually asked, your last question was the one that. My chair and I both had on our minds was about the process to rescind uh. That if we needed to, but um, but you're good, I haven't.
Chewing well.
I have another one, though, uh. Possibly for Pete, possibly for Lisa, depending uh. If. We don't get this regardless when you rescind it, is this a grant that might be available in a future year? I know there's talk about either ARPA or future grant opportunities, but. Is this newly established grant something that could be considered in a subsequent year?
I'm not aware of anything, Peter, Lisa, are you?
I'm not aware.
And it's not gonna be public right now before December first, because. They want everybody to go after this money now, um, so. We might see something in the future, but I don't think they're gonna. Tip their hands, you know, until, you know, until later on.
Okay. I think that covers it for me for questions, and we all set, Mr. Chair, okay? Any other questions from councilmembers? All right, seeing none, I would indicate a motion to approve a resolution outlined in six point four.
So moved.
There a second?
A second.
Like, like, Council Nuccio, uh, also favorable to roll call, Council Murray.
Hi.
Council Khan.
Hi.
Vice Chair Regan.
Hi.
Council Nuccio.
Hi.
Council Luba. Everybody, all right. Councilman Yubichak?
Hi.
I'm an I, so that is unanimous, so thank you, everyone. That brings us to seven A reports, the boards and committees. Responsible to the council, uh, bids did or are about to close for the firehouse projects, I think it was eleven o'clock AM or PM, they closed, yeah.
We appear to have a low as bidder. C H A will be reviewing the engineering firm we're working with, will be reviewing on the bid packet, only came in today. Um, we hope to set up a subcommittee meeting um to approve the award, so we will be at, we're in that process. Doing our due diligence, making sure they submitted everything, and there was no errors in the big packet, so you'll be getting an email.
Great, no, appreciate it, thank you. We had a preliminary review of it, um, a lot of it today, and uh. We want you guys to get an eye, get some eyes on. You know, so good. Well, we can let email. All right, bring us seven B reports and tell council liaison, I'm going to change it up and start with Councilman Luba.
All right. So that the Veterans Recognition Commission did meet last week, that there was a number of issues that we discussed. One of the big things that we discussed, well, two of the big issues is one that the VRC did start developing their their own rules, regulations for for the commission that we did discuss, that they did discuss a few things. I made some suggestions as far as some of the things that they were should consider as far as expanding the their operating procedures and and other things that one of the questions that did come forward, I'm trying to find email that I that I sent Mr. Foley on it, is the issue regarding one of the state statutes regarding the appointment of veterans services organization and whether or not the VRC would actually meet the statutory requirements as set forth, where it's something that was pushed down from the VA and then later adopted by the state and that the that it makes requirements for each town, each each municipality to actually have its own, its own.
Office space.
Thank you. Office space and other things and that beyond the office space, that there were certain requirements that they would have to meet. They would have to veteran services officer that would have to be appointed and other things where that I know that we are looking to, that the VRC is looking to build to that point. But that it doesn't look like the VRC, when it was officially created, was actually appointed by the town council to fill that role. And as such, that this town may actually be in violation of that statutory requirement. I haven't had a chance to fully follow up with this full down again. I apologize. I was hoping to do it today, but it's all been by a lot of stuff that happened. And that I didn't have a chance to follow up with it, but that is something that, well, I believe will need to be brought forward town council to officially either designate the VRC as that or create a veteran service VSO position within the town staff.
Is that something that when I read your email, obviously, not a lot of office space here, but that's not the overriding concern. Is that something you would that you want our attorney to look at?
Yes, that is something that I that I believe the VRC would ask that.
And I'm happy to do that.
That again, it's not looking just for for office space, although if office space was made available, at least on a required basis, that would be something. And again, it's sorry, finally found the email, of course, as I'm wrapping up, is Connecticut General Statute twenty seven dash one thirty five regarding the creation of Veterans Advisory Committee. Again, the VRC seems to be essentially filling that role, but I think that it might need to be officially appointed to that role. And if officially appointed to that role, then they have to meet the state and VA requirements, which are pretty substantial at that point.
Councilman Luba, what did you send that to me?
I sent it November seventeenth.
Thank you.
And I got your reply. Thanks. Looking forward to it.
I think it's great. If we can codify it, why not?
Yeah, I mean, it's something that that beyond just codification would also require there would have to be, again, budgetary requirements for it. There have to be certain things at training that the people that were a part of it would be responsible for. So it's more than just just a codification of it in the town in the town charter or the town regulations. But that's something, again, where the VRC has been looking forward, and they've actually added some of that into their budget, which I know that they'll be discussing with you relatively soon.
Sounds very similar to the historic district commission. And so they had to get certified. And they have requirements on themselves as well, so.
Right, correct. So other than that, that last night I was going to try and, did PCC have an actual meeting last night?
Mr. Powell, did you guys have a meeting last night?
We did not have a meeting last night.
Okay, well, then I didn't miss it. So that means I'm good. Never mind. Okay, yeah, you covered that one. You covered the last week. I apologize. It's been.
We'll be at the next one.
Well, I will be at the next one. When is it?
Next Monday.
Next Monday? All right, I will be there for that since that Flight's Chair and I have been trading off on it. But that's all I have at this point then. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So I had an Eastern Highland Health District meeting where we really kind of wasn't a very long meeting. We looked at the budget review for the for the director and a couple other positions there and talked specifically about reminding everybody about Blue. Blue is back and pretty relevant out there. So if you haven't gotten your blue shot, get your blue shot. Then I also had a PTC meeting, wrap up of the Harvest Fest, which was ridiculously successful and hopefully will be even bigger next year. And of course, planning for the tree lighting. So maybe I believe that's December third on the green. So just getting everything all set for that.
Thank you. Water Commission didn't have quorum last night, so they said informational meeting and the library foundation have their quarterly meeting. The main highlights were obviously been a rough year for stocks and bonds, so they're down for the year on their investments, but they're still up overall over that lifetime of the the foundation. And there was a discussion of state from a resident in town. So they're looking to possibly use those funds to memorialize them once they receive all those funds. And that is it for me. Mike Shereen?
Very good. I have two. November fourteenth, planning zoning met, had a discussion about what a camping cabin is. It is a wooden structure, two hundred fifty square foot maximum, and a campground is the only thing that can have more than one camping cabin. There was a continuation of the sign discussion, both residential and commercial. They did set a public hearing for January twentieth to discuss the sign, the sign regulations that they've been discussing. And then they discussed survey requirements for whenever an addition will be put on a principal structure. And people didn't want to pay the survey fees because they were excessively expensive between two and four thousand dollars, so they don't do the surveys. And their discussion was around the fact that Talon is more restrictive than neighboring towns. So the discussion was about loosening the restrictions and requiring a survey only for new structures and very large expansions. So again, these meetings are very detailed. And so I would refer you to the minutes, but this is just the overview of what they discussed. And there's a lot of detail that they do go over in these discussions. And that's planning zoning. I did do, I did attend the WPCA meeting as well. The Papa Tees and Electric Blue have been connected. Those connections are now complete. Public Works Director was there four times just to check progress and said that everything is working well. There were some minor changes to the intermunicipal agreement with Vernon. And it was mostly minor changes grammatical in nature, and that will go before the Vernon Town Council for approval. And then they did cancel their December meeting due to the fact that it's so close to the Christmas holiday. And that's what I have for you.
Mike Shereen, Councilman Khan? Nope. Councilman Murray?
Yeah, I have a couple. The first is light. There hasn't been a light meeting this year, but we did get an update from the building official. And the chairperson of the Light Commission responded, and I'd like to just read into the record that email, because I think it gives us all a very good overview of what's going on with light. This is from Chairperson Jan Ravino to Jim Pakwin, our building official. Once again, I would like to thank you for handling many of the complaints on an informal basis. I believe that this approach is far more effective than the iron fist approach, and it supports the notion that the town of Talon government works with the residents to improve our community. You've shown a great deal of compassion for many who struggle with hoarding and or maintaining property while they do not live in their in the homes they own. Thank you. So sort of in summary, you know, this is being handled informally and has been very effective. And we haven't had to have any meetings, so that's good. The next is from the Historic District Commission, which met on November sixteenth. I will say I haven't seen draft minutes yet, so this is my recollection from this meeting. They approved two certificates of appropriateness at the meeting. The first was for solar panels at six seventy five Talon Stage Road, just the house with the giant pumpkin. That one, they were very careful about this approval and voted to approve it with a number of special circumstances. The house is one house away from the edge of the district, so it's very much on the perimeter of the historic district. The house was built in two thousand and six. It's not a historic home, and it was built after the inception of the historic district. No other placement options on the property are available. The front of the home is south facing. There is no backyard. There's no viability for ground placement of these solar panels. The house is set back pretty far from the road, and they said how far, and I've forgotten, so I apologize. But it is far back from the road. It's also set up on a rise, so it's harder to see the house from the street. Or you're looking up makes it even further away. So under those circumstances, the historic district did vote to approve the certificate of appropriateness for the solar panels at that property. And they also approved a certificate of appropriateness for eighty nine Talon Green to remove two rotted garage windows and cover the exterior with light siding. And I also attended Board of Ed meetings on the ninth of November. There was not a quorum, but they did discuss a number of things. And then they had a special meeting last week on the seventeenth where they voted on all those things. They approved the specs for the HVAC project, which we just discussed. They approved the Titan Energy to Get bids for the solar project, which Brian touched on. The highlights of this is they want to explore whether they can put solar at all four school locations. There's differences between the locations and where it would go. Obviously, Birch Grove has a brand new roof. That would be a very optimal rooftop placement. TMS has a newer roof. I believe TIS, they are also talking about rooftop. But at the high school where the roof is nearing the end of its life, it doesn't make sense to put solar on the rooftop there. So they're talking about perhaps whether it's viable to put freestanding panels in the parking lot areas. So it would essentially cover your cars, which could be nice, a nice feature, but also has a lot of space for solar there. As Brian said, this is being done through Titan Energy, which is hired, was selected by CCM to coordinate solar projects for any CCM affiliate town. They have done it for a number of these towns. There is no cost to Talon to get these bids that Titan Energy is has been approved to go out and get. So there's there's no assumption of cost in this first step. And there, they did talk very much about how the hope is that there is no cost to Talon to have the solar projects installed on these properties as well. We won't know for sure until the bids come in and they're all, you know, vetted and organized, et cetera. But they, there was a lot of discussion similar to what Councilman Luba said. You know, we all get personal calls, right? They want to put solar on your rooftop and it doesn't cost you anything, and it seems a little fishy. Yeah, we, there was a pretty lengthy explanation about how commercial solar panels are very different than residential solar panel contracts. And that this is actually something, you know, they talked about. I I'm not going to remember the terminology, basically selling the electricity to the to the electric company, things like that, that this is a legitimate thing. And a number of towns have already had successful projects coordinating energy. So there seemed to be some excitement. I know Pete talked a little bit about why this is important. And the Board of Ed did vote to allow for Titan Energy to get these bids. So once they come in, the board will be reviewing them and then making the next decision. But this is coming down the road, so we know it's coming right when i- if it comes before us. And also, the hope is that there is no cost to the town if that happens. And to round out their meeting, they approved turning some obsolete equipment over to the town. They approved their meeting dates for twenty twenty three, and they approved the secretary report to town council, which is required by state statute. So my guess is if we haven't received it, if you haven't received it yet, Steve, it's coming, an official report from the Board of Ed to the town council.
That was a good call. I was actually distracting an email because I got it, I think about ten AM, eleven AM. I was going to pass it on to the people and the rest of the council. All right.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Yubichak?
I actually do not have anything to report. Recreation Advisory Board did not meet last week due to lack of quorum in the commission with people with disability, meaning it was also canceled. So I do not have anything for the council for tonight.
Thank you, Councilman Yubichak. That brings us to item eight point one, which is a consideration of the resolution to approve the establishment of a school building committee of the Talon Middle School at Division of Air Conditioning for the Gym, Cathedral, looking at it one felt way, talk Connecticut via the indoor air quality grant as implemented by the Connecticut Office of School Construction Grants and Reviews. Take away, Brendan?
Yeah, right now, it's framed out to have Mr. Staba, Mr. Lappin, and Ms. Bellity on that committee. There was some interest in maybe having Megan Masa also be on the committee. It's required by statute to have a committee in this circumstance and for them to be individual like committees for each project. So that's where we stand with it.
Thank you. Are there any questions? I know you mentioned it. That there was a correspondence sent in about the inclusion of our project and grants manager to the to the poll.
I believe you'd have to make a motion to have her on if I'm not.
Yeah, no, I was looking at the floor.
Yeah, that was my question is, can we add Megan to the building committee? And, you know, what are your thoughts about that?
Well, you know, it's it's talking to Bev, and I've never sat through one of them, but these these types of projects with the schools are largely Peter doing all the heavy lifting, and that it wouldn't be of great benefit to Megan to do it. She is sitting on the, or she'll be working closely with the, obviously, the Fire Department on Garing Road. And I think she'll learn a lot, by the way. We're looking to put solar on that building as well. So if you want her on there, fantastic. She's she's great. If you don't want her on there, fantastic. I don't think there's a lot to gain.
Thank you. And I know Peter proactively answered another question I had about why we have to have two. So thank you, Peter, for being proactive and answering that question. I do understand now how we have two. My only question is, will we, will each of these projects have discrete separate budgets, or are they going to be balancing one budget between the two building committees?
To answer your question at this time, Katie, we're going to set aside one point one million for TMS and four hundred thousand for TIS. The other thing I want to say in regards to Megan is I have, I, both myself, Bev and Scott, have no problem with with Megan coming on board. It would be better to make a motion tonight to add her and have her not want to do it later on than try to add her later. I'm just going to say that from that, from that point of view. Because you would still have quorum with three, even if you had an active person that wasn't there. It just, if she is considering it, it's probably better to make that motion tonight to add her on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Murray. Are there any other questions, council members? I think I would agree it might not be a bad idea in the absence of them. If you were out for a reason, Megan would probably have to sit there anyways in your absence. It wouldn't be able to serve as a voting member. So I think it probably covers you a little bit to.
I think it would be good. We had trouble making a quorum previously if Scott was out or or something. And we did it for two roof projects, the last two roof project. But as you said, Peter does ninety five percent of the work anyway, so. Probably a hundred percent.
No, no, it's no, it's a group, group, group effort, but maybe we might get another person to take the minutes now, Bev, you know.
Great. Seeing no other discussion, I would indicate a motion to approve resolutionality point one amended to include Megan Masa. Or two. By Councilman Nuccio, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Councilman Murray? Anything for discussion, do a roll call. Councilman Murray?
Hi.
Councilman Khan?
Hi.
Mike Shereen?
Hi.
Councilman Nuccio?
Hi.
Councilman Luba?
Hi.
Councilman Yubichak? Councilman Yubichak, you're there? If you're frozen or not.
I think she froze.
Yeah, it's like she made me for a phone.
Oh, I saw something move. On you, buddy.
Oh, yours, your audio was.
I, no, I got internet something. Sorry about that, everyone. I.
No worries. I'm an I, so that is unanimous. That brings us to eight point two.
Second resort cell phones.
That brings us to eight point two, consideration of a resolution to approve the establishment of a school building committee for the eight Talon Army at school Eric. Addition of air conditioning for the gym located ninety-six Old Coast Road. Talon Connecticut, the uh indoor air farm grant as implemented by the Connecticut Office of School Instruction Grants and Reviews.
Same.
Yeah, same thing.
Basically the same thing, different project. And I'm happy to, again, bounce Megan on there.
Thank you for the discussion. Does it, yeah, well, I'm Megan on, so I'll make a motion to approve resolution and eight point two as amended with Megan Moss that added as a member of the committee. By Councilor Luba, second by Councilman Ucham. All is in favor, Councilman Murray?
Aye.
Councilor Khan? Vice Chair Egan?
Aye.
Councilman Ucham?
Aye.
Councilor Luba?
Aye.
Councilman Uchak?
Aye.
Our eyes, that is unanimous. That brings us to eight point three, which is the consideration of a resolution. For supplemental appropriation for three bridge tour projects, be funded up and reset for the state and federal funds and saying a public hearing on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
This is the uh previously discussed bridge project, the culverts uh down at um industrial road. Um obviously, we need a resolution to move forward with it.
We have the three, the one that is ending is the one that I think goes over the Volantec River.
Yeah, Papa South River.
Alright. Are there any questions, the council members? Alright, seeing none, I'm making a motion to approve the resolution setting the public hearing for the eighth point three. By Councilman Ucham, is there a second?
Second.
By Councilman Murray. All is in favor, Councilman Murray?
Aye.
Councilor Khan? Vice Chair Egan?
Aye.
Councilman Ucham?
Aye.
Councilor Luba?
Aye.
Councilman Uchak?
Aye.
I have an eye, so that is unanimous. That brings us to eight point four, which is consideration of a resolution to declare engine take five forty. Eighty-eighty-seven engine take a surplus property with the town.
Been used a lot for many years. Uh it's time to send it on down the road.
Are there any questions from council members? Councilman Ucham?
We have any estimate of what we think we'll be able to get for an army sale and whatever we get for it, we'll go to the ambulance fund, correct?
Anywhere between probably eight thousand to maybe twenty thousand dollars only. Um and that would obviously be your decision with, we would agree with you.
The reason it's not worth that much, I believe, is because. The town that picks it up has to do a lot of rehab work to get it up to to speed and you can buy it. There's a lot of cost uh with that.
If we, um whatever we get for it though, is it gonna be going for the ambulance fund?
Lisa, is that ambulance fund for the money that that John gets on his surplus?
I'm, I had a hard time hearing Councilman Ucham. Unbelievable.
I know.
Once John fans, once John gets rid of his truck, um sells it out, uh where does that money go to?
Well, normally if it had been purchased through the ambulance reserve fund. That's where the money would go back to. I would strongly recommend that the council. Uh direct that the funds go into there for the offset of future uh equipment that's coming down the pike. So I I think this particular vehicle. May have been purchased right when we established the fund. So I'm not sure if it was purchased with the ambulance money way back then or not. Um that was way before my time. However, um I I would recommend it going to that fund unless there's any other objections. The fund is strongly controlled by the town council as far as the capital improvements that it's used for. Um it's basically to provide for ambulances for the most part, but it's been used for other. Capital items in the past as well. Um and with the way that costs have been rising. It's, it's good to have that buffer there.
Good, yeah. I was just gonna clarify, I think I saw Chief Laitel shaking his head. I think was the ambulance fund, wasn't that created in the nineties or?
I was just setting that up when I took over in two thousand.
Yeah.
A couple of years get set up, but the, like the director said, that fund was anything that was left over. We were trying to build a fund for apparatus reserves. So when we had projects that were. Uh so that's a few months ago, seven hundred and fifty, that would offset additional cost for any that's rising, so. Um this start like, you know, Mr. Foley said, unfortunately. The era rehabbing into parts available, just because of the vintage of it, he's absolutely uh right on target. So we did sell the rescue truck. Uh we're taking a uh bill of sales tomorrow night for the rescue truck and that was same similar situation that was bought. Right when we setting up the fund at two thousand, two thousand one, so. I'm taking, we're taking direction well.
Sounds good. So do we need any general consensus or any, is there any question for Brian or Lisa? Would we need to amend the resolution to to dedicate funds? Since it's likely it wasn't purchased under the ambulance fund?
Uh may I answer that or?
Go ahead, Lisa, please do.
Okay, I I would recommend that you do re- um amend the resolution to include that. The proceeds, the net proceeds that are received to be deposited back into the ambulance reserve fund. For future use, something like that. Future capital needs that, and like I said, the money is only used when the town council approves it being used. Either through the budget process or supplemental appropriations. It can't be accessed any other way.
Thank you, Lisa, and then Councilman Murray, you had a question, aren't we?
Yes, uh policy A one seventy-six dash four, item D says all proceeds uh shall be deposited. To the capital account of the town. Um so I don't know if uh change in the motion is sufficient to. Work outside of this policy or.
Actually, the um the fund that this is in is also a capital fund. So it, I think, you know, under that policy, it would, but it just directs it. To the men, one of the many capital funds. We do have a capital non-recurring fund. But this is also in um. Almost this exactly the same as capital non-recurring, but it's always segregated into the ambulance fund separate.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Murray. Are there any other questions, council members? Alright, seeing that I'm making a motion to approve resolution, Ellen in eight point four, as amended to direct the funds to the ambulance uh reserve fund.
So.
For a second.
Second.
Thank the Councilman Murray. Anything for discussion, we'll do a roll call vote. Councilman Murray?
Aye.
Councilor Khan?
Aye.
Councilor, or Vice Chair Egan?
Aye.
Councilman Ucham?
Aye.
Councilor Luba?
Aye.
Councilman Uchak?
Aye.
I'm an I, so that's unanimous. That brings us to eight point five, which is the appointment to the commission of people with disabilities. Have one appointment of, I believe, Ron Friedman. Attend Michael Valley Drive for a term of eleven twenty-two twenty-two to eight one twenty twenty-three, so I'm making a motion to approve that appointment. The move by Councilman Ucham, is there a second?
That's there.
Go ahead.
Anything for discussion, do a roll call vote.
Actually, I have one question.
Yes.
Um when I was reviewing the vacancies, do we really not have anybody on the board of building deals?
That is a good question and I remember looking at that for my term when Councilman I served as the uh the vetting committee. So that is actually one that is in the process of being, I think, written out of state statute. It it no longer is necessary. Um I think James Patten has talked about it at length, so that's something that just needs to be taken out of requirement, I believe. A department within planning development, the building department actually handles all the responsibilities, so it serves no purpose.
Um and then if it's okay, I was wondering if um Brian, maybe you can send out an email. Because there's a lot of vacancies right now.
I'm happy to do that.
Just if, if there's like a link to the boards and what they do, then we can maybe get some people.
Yeah, maybe social media as well.
Yeah.
We did pick up someone on economic development, which is a big win out of nowhere, so.
Yeah.
And I met with him, I happened to come in just to get him on a basic competence meeting. Um super qualified, so happy to have him on board. And I'll do that.
It'd be good, a good news resolution is to join one of these boards or committees, especially.
Yeah.
Especially like of the water fishing, most of those translate.
Get out of the house, run, do some meetings, get involved. None of us are not busy.
Yeah. Alright, seeing no for discussion, we'll do the roll call vote, Councilman Murray?
Aye.
Councilor Khan? Vice Chair Egan?
Aye.
Councilman Ucham?
Aye.
Councilor Luba?
Aye.
Councilman Uchak?
Aye.
An I, so it's unanimous. There is the whole business, which there is none, that item ten or for the town manager. Have any updates for us, Brian?
I do not.
Alright, that brings us to you, but are any questions for the town manager?
Why don't you have it? Have you thought about solar?
Okay, that brings us to item eleven, the adoption of minutes. I'm making a motion to approve the minutes outlined in eleven point one. So for a second?
Second.
Back with Councilman Murray. The roll call vote, discussion, Councilman Murray?
Aye.
Councilor Khan? Vice Chair Egan?
Aye.
Councilman Ucham?
Aye.
Councilor Luba?
Aye.
Councilman Uchak?
Aye.
I'm an I, so that is unanimous. I am twelve, corresponds to council.
We had three emails come in uh since uh November eighth, one regarding the town green. One regarding school buses and one regarding a community shred event.
Brings in thirteen chairperson's report. Uh did that one person attend the chair hour and I relayed their information. We actually had an email from the resident. About a month or so ago about bringing the farmer's market back to the greens, I relayed that to Vice Chair Egan. Councilman Murray was the liaison for Ag and town manager's office to investigate further, because as you had more events. On the green, I think it'd be good to bring it back to the central. But look at Brian, you have some updates for that?
I do. Let me go back. Um what was the 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 thing that you had said right before that?
There is a.
The farmer's market.
The farmer's market, back on prior to that.
Um I don't think I said anything else.
Can we get that replay?
The one person that had a chair, I forwarded the email from them. It was a communication that kind of just over two things I wanted to.
Shredding.
Shredding, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Those customers.
Uh I got that email. Uh I'm having uh Sarah Beth uh reach contact Laureen to see, because she's done some shredding stuff before. Uh we're looking at a lot of different options, possibly at the same time we do the electronics. Thing or maybe after tax time um at certain, at one of those times, looking at it and see what the cost is, having, I've never been involved with one, so. Uh exploratory, we are looking into it. Um and the second thing was. Had a meeting with the act, a woman on the act commission, um where she's gonna talk to the market master.
Yeah.
Um about moving the one from uh down the road up, back up to the green. Uh there were some problems when it moved off. Um in order to be a market master for a farmer's market, you just have to go and have a farmer's market, invite farmers, and you're the market master. Uh so, you know, basically, we're gonna try to leverage it, you know, we're gonna help you promote. Your farmer's market. If you have it, please move back to the green.
Yeah.
Uh please do this with us or please watch the great farmer's market we're gonna have on the green and come visit one where we have. Uh so, th- those are the options. Hopefully she chooses the the first one to come and and put it back on the green and um. Uh really reinvigorate. Um I I think we'll have some positive results. Uh David uh Corcoran and I met and I, I'm sorry, I forget the woman's name. Sullivan was her last name.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. She she uh she owns a farm up off of K Lane. Um so I think we're gonna make some positive steps. That's, that's, you know, how I am about uh reinvigorating uh everything up here, so. I can't wait.
Great. Um otherwise, yeah.
I would say um I I love that idea. I know we had talked before to the the market master. God, John, what, like six years ago? Um and there was some. Differences of kind of what we wanted to see the farmer's market grow to. And I would love, love, love to have our actual local farmers via our farmer's market on the green.
So our local farmers somewhat disenfranchised by previous uh market masters and I was.
Uh it was also discussed, um and I'm not above a personal reach out to many of them on my.
Uh and say, come on down. Uh we we brainstormed on that as well. So yes, thank you.
Yeah, I think that with that and and we get some of the local craft people, people that are putting stuff.
We've also been disenfranchised.
I would like to, if we can, you know, if there's any way we can help to get to make the farmer's market really. Like the one in Ellington has grown, is amazing, it's great. Coventry will never compete with, we're not even gonna try.
So we're super jealous of all of them. This was all discussed.
Yeah.
Uh the Ellington one inhabiting on a different day, uh so we're not competing, uh so we're we're gonna look at. Uh I'm I'm not gonna mess around.
I like that.
Make it nice. I love me a farmer's market.
I like that. Mama Max, my friends.
Yeah.
And otherwise, the county region council of governments had a meeting last week. Very minor business, there was a interregional micro mobility feasibility study and approving a uh. A proposal from Clinton Larson Allen LLP. And then I did send an update, says the council members, there's an ad hoc crumbling foundations meeting that I attended and. They are still pending, but there was the announcement that there's two million dollars from NCOG and CROG for low and moderate income households to be assisted. Through HUD, so they were probably expecting those funds at the end of the year. And there was discussion about hosting a follow-up forum, possibly in Ellington regarding crumbling foundations and just a general update. Um that was a request from the town manager, John Elsasser, and uh Chris Fieldman looked into it and there's some discussion amongst them and. I believe the two crumbling foundation, I forget the caucus chairs. From Ellington and uh down the key from South Windsor, we're both on and agreed that that might be good and inviting Congress and Courtney's office to collaborate as well. So expect something for that, I'll spring or something next year. And that is it for chairperson's report. So that brings us to fourteen communications and petitions from council members.
I I'd like to say it's been very impressive to watch you uh do all these opening the public hearing, closing the public hearing. Yeah, you did great. And I see, I I followed it all, so thank you very much for making it clear.
Do you have a cheat sheet?
Yeah, just. Rinse, wash and repeat. You'd use it after a while.
You think about it in your sleep.
Yeah.
It wakes up, trust me.
Yeah.
Everybody.
Any other, Councilman Ucham?
So this is always a um a little bit of a weird spot for me, because I'm the town council member, but also being the state rep. The start of a new session and a new budget coming up, so I am gonna be meeting with all of my towns. To discuss priorities, things that the towns are looking to um accomplish in ways in which I can try to help facilitate that, so. Since I'm a sitting council member, I don't know, like in the past, when it wasn't me, people would come and talk, so I don't know how. You would like to handle something like that, but I would like to, next month hopefully, preferably. Sit down to talk um about priorities for the town.
Okay.
Well, that'd be good, and I think also if it's not next month, possibly, because obviously there's a new state senator as well, it might be good to have both there to do a general introduction. Update to the community and to the council, so I think that would be a good opportunity.
Ten also, yeah.
Yeah, and ten.
Yeah, um between you and the Board of Ed, we'll be trying to get, I'll be trying to get that set up. We already are setting up a meeting to sit with the town manager. And we go three more rounds in a day, um but trying to get everybody here to kind of meet them too, so. Um if there's any priorities or anything, start thinking about it.
Well, we'll be having probably, I think, either next meeting or the meeting after uh discussion of our goals, so if there's anything there that can be. Lobbyed over to the state, but it's crumbling foundations or low water concerns, I think either of those are probably pending to the state, so.
So we had that, we had a meeting today um with this, well, we didn't have a meeting today with, but there was a. General meeting, a public meeting today about the grant that we put in. Um and it went over the prioritized projects and everything, so quite a few members of Taland actually went. And spoke at the meeting um about consideration for the funding for the town. Uh and a couple of people who even weren't in the vineyards actually went to speak about the um water contamination issues and such. And the grant funding, so I'm not sure at this point, after the public hearing, I think it's within a few weeks that they'll. Start rolling out their decisions for the next round. I think there's five years worth of money there, so this is the first year. We're looking at it and that, and I actually also spoke to um. Congressman, not Congressman, Senator Murphy's office today about um federal. Looking for federal funding for the water contamination issues, emerging contaminants also, so. Um still in motion.
Yeah.
Alright, any other communications or petitions from council members? So, Councilman Uchak, your hand is up.
Sorry, I'm not there tonight, um but I just want to say happy Thanksgiving to everybody on the council. For the town staff and Board of Education. Appreciate everybody's hard work and hope everybody just enjoys their time. With their families and of course, I'll lovely um Clark, it takes all the minutes, Lisa, so that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Councilman Uchak, and I would concur with those comments, hope they're gonna have safe travels if they're going anywhere and has a great Thanksgiving holiday. With that, we'll move to item fifteen, public list of participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council. The three-minute limit, if you're on Zoom, you can start not raise hand function, or if you're in the audience, you can approach the table and stick your name and address. The three minute limit, if you're on Zoom, you can start not raise hand function, or if you're in the audience, you can approach the table and stick your name and address. Alright, going once, going twice. I'll make a motion to adjourn at eight thirty-one PM.
So.
Second.
Councilor Luba and Councilman Uchio? All is in favor, Councilman Murray?
Aye.
Councilor Khan? Vice Chair Egan? Councilman Uchio?
Aye.
Councilor Luba?
Aye.
Councilman Uchio?
Aye.
I'm an eye, so that is unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.